The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Waverne City Council meeting here August 12th, 2024, 6:00 PM. This is, we're getting down here now, we're down to about maybe the second or third last, about the third last meeting, third, fourth last meeting coming on this council. Election will be coming up, and there'll be more about that coming up. Just check out our website, we'll talk about that later on tonight, too. First thing we're going to do on the agenda is usual, is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, council meeting, and strategic planning and priorities meeting held July 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the Strategic Planning and Priorities Committee meeting held July the 15th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, worship.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I do have one addition tonight, which is 10E, which will be the Free Chlorine Monitor and Data Collection RFP.
And, council, any other additions? Nothing? And from there, call the question, all in favor? Good. No public hearings, delegations, proclamations, no reports to standing committees. A consent agenda, we have the accounts receivable, the building report from July 2024, casualties report, the fire reports, the public works report for June, July, that was the fire reports June, July, public works reports are for July, and the water treatment report from July. These will all be received, and do I motion to have these received and filed?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the consent agenda items be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions, accounts payable?
Your worship, I'd make the motion that purchases from July 1st, 2024 to July 31st, 2024, in the amount of $1,810,273.81 be approved for payment. These purchases include quick pays of $144,320, accounts payable, $1,137,975, direct withdrawals $525,526, and debit card transactions of $2,451.46.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Audited financial statement, Laura, if you would, please?
Thank you. So, the City of Waverne's 2023 audit was recently completed by Grant Thornton. Grant Thornton has provided us with a qualified opinion, as the city has employees with a benefit of accumulating non-investing sick leave as of December 31st. Management has not recorded this estimate of the accrued benefit, and therefore, the qualified opinion has been presented, because this is a departure from Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. This is similar to prior years, as we haven't recorded it in the past, because management has the opinion that it's not an accurate representation of a liability to the city to record the sick leave as a potential liability, since they do not receive it upon termination. For the year ending December 31st, 2023, the city was also required to adopt a new accounting standard, the PS 3280 Asset Retirement Obligation. The city has applied this new accounting standard for the landfill closure, however, we were not able to determine the liability for asset retirement obligations for other tangible assets that are owned by the city. This is in relation to buildings containing non-exposed asbestos, and currently, there's no estimated liability on the retirement of those assets, and therefore, remediation of the asbestos is not estimated, and disclosure of a liability resulting, is resulting in a qualified opinion. Details on this standard is in the notes, and that's on page 14 and 15 of the financials. So, I'll go through just a budget comparison to the actuals. So, our revenue, we budgeted just under $25 million, our actuals was $27.2 million, so difference of $2.6 million. Expenses, we budgeted $27.7 million, the actual was $30.4, and a difference of $2.6 million. The budget, the budget financials shows a deficit budget, and this is due to our inter-fund transfers and amortization and transfers for capital purchases. So, note two on page 15 shows the calculation to a balanced budget that we present when we have our budget. So, areas to highlight, so on the statement of financial position, that is on page five, the cash and cash equivalents, these decreased by $1.87 million. The cash decreased due to funding of utilities and infrastructure projects. Our investments increased by half a million, this was due to GIC investments that were reinvested into portfolio investments, and we received higher returns. We saw an increase in our taxes receivable of $100,000 and other receivables of $160,000. Nothing in particular stands out for those, it's just a few more properties that we hadn't received taxes on. Accounts payable and other liabilities, this decreased by $1.15 million, so last year, we had some large payables at the end of the year that we had relating to utility projects, so that's why it was higher last year. Long-term debt, we had a loan repayment, and that's outlined in note 11 on page 18. Deferred revenue, so this decreased, and this was mostly due to, in 2022, our CCBF funding from the federal government was classified as deferred, because our project hadn't been approved by the government yet. So, now that they have been approved, then we were able to move that to revenue and not have it as deferred in 2023. So, our asset retirement obligation, this increased by $2.6 million, this was due to the new accounting obligation for the standard, and this is the increase for the landfill closure cost, and we had to record it as a full liability, the full amount of what we estimate the landfill will cost us to close. So, tangible capital assets, our major projects during the year were lift station three refurbishment, water treatment plant upgrades, and the new ice plant chiller at the arenas. Fleet purchases were the crack sealer, infrared asphalt reclaimer, and a wide-area mower. We got new flagpoles that were installed in Memorial Park, and overall, the tangible capital assets decreased due to the amortization that was recorded for the landfill liability, and that was an estimate of $2.45 million. So, the hospital levy at December 31st, the city had paid the hospital foundation $2.25 million of what had been collected, so we have just over, probably $3.75 million, that's due to them, that will be paying in 2024. So, with the schedule of taxes, overall, it was $63,000 above budget, nothing in particular that stands out there. The general levy was lower than budgeted just due to appeals. Penalties received were also less than budgeted. The grant and lose from taxes, SASS power grant received was 140 above budget. With the schedule of operating and capital revenue, overall, it was 2.3 above budget. This was primarily due to, in general government, we saw investment income of $1 million above budget, and that was due to just higher interest rates that were received on our portfolio investments. Protection services was pretty consistent with the prior year in their budget. Transportation services, there was extra funding received for the airport asphalt, and the CCBF was budgeted for $671,000, but we recognized the revenue that we received that was deferred in 2022 of $335,000. The under-environmental, the landfill fees were $200,000 above budget, and the multi-material stewardship program funding resulted, it was above budget, and that resulted in $310 in extra revenue. The planning and development services, this was, it was pretty consistent with budget, the prior year was higher due to our sale of the land for the hospital, so in 2022, it was higher than usual. Recreation and cultural services, this was above budget due to just increase in facility demands. And the other income in that department was above budget, as we had some insurance claims that we had proceeds from. And utility services, it was $100,000 above budget just due to increase in rates and water usage. So, with our expenses, overall, it was $2.6 million above budget. General government were pretty consistent, it was over budget by $23,000, and it was mostly due to an increasing cost for some contract services. Protective services, the police, were $38,000 above budget, mostly due to repairs to their facility, and fire and protection was actually under budget by $140,000, but they had some vacant positions and some facility repairs that were budgeted for that were not completed. So, transportation services, the expenditures were over budget by $600,000. Wages were actually under budget due to eliminating a position and a vacancy within engineering. Professional contract services were above budget, and that was due to increase in costs of the infrastructure revitalization program, and that's the asphalt and street-related upgrades and repairs. Maintenance materials and supplies were over budget by $100,000, and that was mostly due to the high snowfall, and resulted in having to have more snow removal and sanding costs, and then, as well as an increase in street maintenance. So, within environmental and public health services, the expenditures were over budget by $2.36 million, so this is due to the landfill retirement obligation. So, we had to record an amortization amount of $2.4 million on that asset. Planning and development, the expenditures were under budget by $217,000, and this was mostly due to a vacant position, and within recreation and cultural services, their expenditures were over budget by $434. So, we did have wages above budget of $159,000, but this is mostly due to increase in demands, and then we had some vacancies, so which resulted in needing overtime to staff for these increased demands. Utilities were above budget by $115,000, that was also due to like an increase in demand on our facilities and increase in rates. Maintenance materials and supplies were below budget by $230,000, and this was mostly due to facility repairs that were not completed, and they were just carried over to 2024. So, within utility services, expenditures were actually under budget by $214,000. We saw some of it within wages due to some vacancies. Professional services were under, due to the damn repairs being less than had been budgeted. So, our schedule of accumulated surplus, our reserves, they decreased by $1.4 million, and that's mostly due to internal loans within the utility projects and for funding for the infrastructure revitalization program. So, overall, we did see a deficit of $294,000 above the budget deficit, so this was primarily due to the landfill retirement obligation and an increase in the cost for the IRP program for the asphalt and the sidewalks that were completed. So, our financials are pretty consistent with what we budgeted for, we didn't budget for the landfill liability and amortization, so if we didn't have that to record, we'd be pretty close on budget. Other than that, our audited financials and our public accounts will be available on our website once we receive the final copies from Grant Thornton.
Do I have a motion, please? To accept?
Your worship, I'd move that the 2023 audited financial statements and the 2023 public accounts be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Comment? I would like to make a comment. I'd like to really give a round of applause and a thank you to all the management and to all the city employees that to be saying that, to come up with a thing, saying that we are just, we are almost right on budget, that is great work all the way through, that we have been able to maintain that and get, I know there's stuff where some of the stuff wasn't done and everything, but I mean, it's, we, we came here with having a lot of stuff accomplished, a tremendous amount of stuff accomplished last year, and we're going to have to see the same this year even more so, in our, what our dobs are as city council, street, roads, recreation facilities, water and tour, so that's what our jobs are, job is, the city council, so thank you very much for everything, and you are the chief watcher of everything, thank you, Laura, for keeping us things, everything online and watching the numbers. Any other comments?
Sure. Thanks, your worship. Yeah, I would reiterate what Mayor Roy said, good job to everybody on this. Laura, I have some things, I just want to be sure that I understand correctly, and then some things that I think need to be said out loud. So, to be clear, first off, this is for the year ended 2023, so last Christmas, so when we look at, you had mentioned in there earlier, things like snow removal over by about $100,000, and that is not from this winter, that is from a long-forgotten winter, 16 or so months ago, so that was a very rough winter, so I think that's worth noting. Laura, make sure I understand this right, I think I do, as a municipality, we are not allowed to post a deficit budget, we have to show a balanced budget when we present it. If we need, we can't, we don't, I guess I should say, the City of Waverne currently doesn't go for debt, what we do is reach into our reserves where we can to make up any budget shortfalls. Am I characterizing that correctly?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, good. Thanks for that clarification. Couple more things, the asset retirement obligation, this is new, and this is not a Waverne thing, this is a, can you help understand, help me understand and be able to better explain this change and who's driving the change?
So, this is a change by the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards Board, and they brought this in, so you have to, anything that could be or would be a liability to you in the future, you have to record it as a liability now, instead of when you would retire the asset, so if it, so for instance, landfill, we don't plan on retiring that asset for 50 years, but we have to show now what it would cost us in 50 years to retire it, and what, and then the amortization comes in for the amount that we would have used, used up in those 50 years, so that we have the liability recorded. So, that's where we fall into, like with the asbestos in buildings, we don't necessarily, we have done studies on most, most of our buildings, but to go into it really specific, you have to, we'd have to identify basically every spot that there's asbestos and have a dollar amount to remediate that, so that's our liability. So, lots of, lots of the buildings, it would be a matter of probably tearing them down, the cost that it would cost to tear them down, so that's why it makes it difficult. We are looking into a study on how we can get a dollar figure for that, but it's pretty difficult. We'd have, we have to hire somebody to do that.
And I appreciate that that's difficult. So, this will be a line item on our financials for the foreseeable future, not just for the landfill, but for our facilities as a whole.
Yeah, forever.
Thank you. Couple more, if I may, your worship. Yeah, the hospital levy, we are about one-third paid out, I think you said we just over $3 million left to pay out, and did you say that would all be, the remainder would be paid out this year?
Yeah, so we had, like, we were supposed to pay $3 million last year, they didn't invoice us before the end of the year, so we actually paid it in January, so our last payment to have $3 million paid was paid in January, and now we're making quarterly payments, so we could have one last payment due at the end of this year, which we'll pay in January, but depending on when they invoice.
Then that would be, that would be the entire.
Then we've paid the $6 million.
Yeah, good. And that is paid to the hospital foundation, not to the Ministry of Health, but just to the foundation. Thank you for that. Then, I think, yeah, those are my questions, thanks, your worship. Thank you, by the way, Laura.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so the majority of our deficit is actually just a paper deficit?
Yeah.
Ms. Gordon?
Thank you, worship. So, just to be clear on this retirement obligation, even though it's on paper, does it affect our budgeting process at all?
Well, that's how, that's why we have like the summary of how our budget to zero, zeros out to our financials, because we budget on a cash basis, but your financials are on accrual, so we don't budget for amortization, but our financials do, so it's like we budget to the cash coming in, to the cash going out, but our financials budget to, like our, to have amortization and other accruals.
Right. So, during our budgeting process, because of the way we do budget, it doesn't affect that, it just, it just affects our annual statement at the end of the year. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, nothing to do more, call the question, all in favor? Approved unanimously. No introduction of bylaws, and the, and no unfinished business, new business, King Road, Road Construction Rehabilitation, Jennifer?
Thank you.
King Street?
King Street, yes. King Street, Highway 35, between First Avenue, Highway 13th, and Fifth Street is part of the city's truck route in a major thoroughfare. Over the past 10-plus years, there have been no significant repairs or improvements done, and the surface has deteriorated, resulting in significant cracking and potholes. The city has identified this as a priority to the Government of Saskatchewan for funding through the Urban Highway Connector Program for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of King Street from First Avenue to Fifth Street. In order to ensure the city is applying for proper funding and can properly budget for potential construction in 2025, the Engineering Department is planning for the detailed design to be completed in 2024. The Engineering Department has budgeted $75,000 for engineering consultants and studies in the 2024 budget. On July 10th, a request for proposal for the rotary construction and rehabilitation design of King Street was posted on the city's online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SASS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the City of Waverne by July 30th at 1:00 PM. A total of six proposals were received, and the bids are summarized below and exclude taxes. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, met the RFP requirements, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. All of the proposals met the full requirements. So, it is recommended that the rotary construction and rehabilitation design of King Street be awarded to Walker Projects Incorporated for a total of $29,900, not including taxes.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the road construction and rehabilitation design of King Street be awarded to Walker Projects, Inc. for a total of $29,900, not including taxes.
Second?
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion?
Thanks, worship. Jen, just to be clear, it is your expectation that this design work would get done this year, and then we would make application next year to the, to the Urban Highway Connector Program, maybe that work would happen maybe '25 or '26?
Our hope would be for the work to happen '25. I can't exactly state when the government's schedule will take funding applications for UHCP because of the election this year, so they have given no commitments on timelines for things like that, so we have been speaking to them, we had identified this as our third priority last year, and we got our first two priorities approved this year, so we have highlighted to them that we still consider this a priority, it is our number one priority, just to reiterate it, but this gives us a good idea, should they open the program with, say, a shortened timeline or anything because of the election, that we will be ready and hopefully make it high on the priority list, because we would have a shovel-ready project.
So, wanted to hear, thank you.
Anything else? I guess my, my comment is, is that we, you know, it's very good to see that how our First Avenue is getting done, and it's also, this is another urban connector road, and the reason why these roads get pounded out so badly is because they are, they are connector roads, and these are ones, and we don't have a truck route, because again, it would cost so much money to have, between the R M and ourselves, to put a truck route around the city, and unfortunately, this is what happens when you, but if we just kind of wash our weights on our trucks and try to slow the number of trucks down, then, and we're doing things effectively by using the lights and doing proper use of lights and things, so we're not gouging everything, so that is good. When do you expect the First Avenue to be done?
First Avenue?
Yeah.
So, we are expecting that they will complete the asphalt next week.
Right, and so, and then things will be completed, so, but I mean, hopefully, the King Street will be just as quick a program as what that, thank you. Any more comments? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Construction of Equalization Lagoon Infrastructure Upgrades, Jennifer, if you would, please?
Thank you. The City of Waverne obtained Catarol and Wright to conduct a hydraulic assessment of the city's main sewage pump station, lift station number one, in July of 2022, as a result of localized flooding events that occurred in May and June of 2022. The hydraulic evaluation of the wastewater collection and district infrastructure identified areas of restriction within the system, limiting pumping capacity, and provided recommendations for upgrades to address the capacity and operability issues of Lift One Pumping System. An engineering design was awarded to MPE Engineering Limited in May of 2023. The upgrades included a bypass of the Equalization Lagoon inlet structure to reduce the restriction to the pumping system, and upgrades to the transfer pumping station to comply with Water Security Agency requirements and improve operability. The 2024 budget had allocated $1.2 million for the recommended upgrades to address the capacity and operability of Lift Station Number One and the lagoon. On May 31st, a request for proposal for the construction of the Equalization Lagoon Infrastructure Upgrades were posted on the city's new online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SASS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the City of Waverne by June 17th at 1:00 PM. A total of two proposals were received, the bids are summarized below and do include taxes. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, met the RFP requirements, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. All of proponents met the full requirements. MPE reviewed costs with Contact to see if any improvements could be made on pricing, but any adjustments would have seen a reduction in scope. Contact has agreed to hold pricing until August 15th. We have already seen a $7,000 increase in electrical cost to hold this price. This project would be a multi-year project over 2024 and 2025 due to construction timelines. So, it is recommended that the construction of the Equalization Lagoon Infrastructure Upgrades be awarded to Contact General Contractors Limited as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP. This would require a pre-budget approval of $1 million in 2025, any budget not used in 2024 would be carried over into 2025.
Do I have a motion, please?
Worship, I move the construction of the Equalization Lagoon Infrastructure Upgrade to be awarded to Contact General Contractors Limited as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP. I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Our next one is on the election information. Tina and Kyle, are you going to do a, who's going to speak? Kyle, are you going to speak on this? Okay, if you would come to the podium, please. Our Communication Coordinator, Kyle?
Yeah, I'll start. So, the 2024 municipal election is set to take place on November 13th, 2024. Poll dates, locations, budget, and election worker remuneration dates were, rates were set at the regular council meeting on May 27th. Since then, Communication Coordinator's Herties, who I've appointed as the associate returning offer for the election, and I have been working on the candidate package, the 2024 election webpages, as well as created an election worker application. The website went live on July 30th, and on July 31st, the election worker application was posted on the website and emailed to all previous election workers from the 2020 municipal election and the 2023 municipal by-election. Kyle and I have also come up with a social media campaign to encourage residents to apply to work the elections, utilize our website to become familiar with the candidates, and most importantly, how and where to vote. So, I just recommend that councils familiarize themselves with this website and share the information with residents. So, Kyle's going to kind of walk you through the website here.
Yeah, so there's a few screenshots here that just go through how to navigate the website. This, when you go to waverne.ca, this is the main page you find. This, when you go to weyburn.ca, this is the main page you find. And on here, there are two locations where you can actually find the election information. The first being in the top banner, just labeled 2024 election. As well as under the news announcement banner, there is a widget you can click on, and that will also take you to the election webpage. Scroll down. And this is the main page for the election webpage. There's two primary navigation panels, the first one being on the right. Um, and this one is generally for voter information. So as a voter, this is where you'll find everything about the 2024 election. And near the bottom is the secondary navigation panel. And this one is all the links in that primary one, but there's some candidate-specific information found down here as well. So as a candidate, when you did click that candidate, um, image on the secondary navigation panel, this is what will open. And on here, it shows the candidates. Can you just scroll down slightly? So the main difference between the Your Candidates and the Candidate Page, um, just found on the primary sidebar, is this Candidate Info icon. So when you click on that icon, that's where it will, you will find the Candidate Information booklet. So as a candidate, this is where you really want to familiarize yourself with. And as a voter, um, this is also, you can read up on just general information, or you can find your way to the Your Candidates icon. Just scroll down. So as a candidate, this is the information you'll find quite relevant to yourself. The general candidate information up there is all the resources you'll need, as well as the three icons here indicate the forms you'll find to fill out and apply to be a candidate, I believe, as well as the Candidate booklet, um, which includes the, all the relevant information for the upcoming 2024 election. As well as, there's another link to the Your Candidates, so you can view all the candidates who submit their names for all mayoral, um, councillor, as well as the school board trustee election. If you scroll down, this is the, when you click the candidate information, this is what opens, and it leads you to that candidate booklet. And there's two locations, you can actually click it. There is that hyperlink where it says 2024 Candidate booklet, or you can actually select the image itself. And this just brings you to a PDF of that candidate booklet, and that's just a image of what should happen. And then that'll just be a PDF. You can actually scroll through all 30 some pages of it. On that main candidate page, this is the forms that will come up, and all the relevant forms for a candidate applying will be found under here. And one of the last tabs is Election News. Right now, the only public notice we have is looking for the election workers. And more, um, promotion of this will come later, closer to the date. And that-
Is there, there's a, is there a click on here for, I think I saw, I was looking through it, Suma School that they can take prior to this?
Yes, if you scroll up, there was a little link just right at the bottom of that page, I believe. Scroll down. Yes, there's Suma Candidate School right there. And through there, you'll be able to find a whole resource of different links that has videos linked under there, as well as just general information in PDF form as well.
Because it wasn't Suma Candidate School. It's coming in September. I think they can attend it via Zoom, can't they? On, you know?
Yes, your worship. So, um, we would encourage people who do want to run to, to click on that. But Suma does have, uh, different candidate schools for different elections. So they'll have one specific towards the cities to give more education on that. That'll be listed on there. We do encourage people to check out that site to learn more.
And Suma, again, for those new to the thing, it's Saskatchewan Urban, uh, Saskatchewan Municipal, Municipal Urban Association. Saskatchewan. Anyway, they, so, but that's where you've got, so it's for all the cities and towns to, that you can get and understand what it's about and what role a councillor takes.
Yep, exactly.
Mr. Van Bitchen?
Thank you for, for your information.
When does nominate, what's the nomination date opening?
Um, nominations open September 25th, and nominations close October 9th at 4:00 PM.
So there's really only a two-week period in there, pretty much, that?
Yep.
Is that normal?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
And unlike provincial nominations, which need 25 signatures, they only need five signatures that live within the town, within the city. Go ahead. And it's not, and it's, you have to be a resident of the city to vote and to also nominate. And you can't, just, just because you own property on a town, doesn't, a house of property doesn't mean that you have the right to run for candidate or vote.
Uh, yeah, you can be, you have to have resided in the city of Weyburn or on land in the municipality for at least three consecutive months, be immediately preceding the day of the election.
So that's, but I mean, my point being is that you can't be landlord, own property in Calgary, and, and be voting.
Well, yeah, if the, you can be the owner of accessible land in the city of Weyburn or land now situated in the municipality for at least three months as well.
You can?
Yep.
Matthew, what are you, are you, did it change that?
Nope, there was no changes.
Why, I thought you, okay.
No, this, this is the same process as before.
Anything else we should add? Any more comments, council? Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Clearing the path application. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So SARMA just clearing the path, uh, which is a corridor system, uh, which was developed to improve the economic development in rural communities by providing the primary weight access to a network of corridors. So the CTP corridors with weight truck count, um, of 36 trucks per day are greater eligible for $1,200 per kilometer. So here in Weyburn, 22nd Avenue is a primary road. This road is under the jurisdiction of the city and the RM of Weyburn. The city owns a portion from Highway 35 to Emerson Park, as outlined in the map below. So the RM of Weyburn has already applied for their portion of 22nd Avenue to be eligible for funding and applications required from both municipalities. So in order for us to submit an application, uh, SARMA requires a resolution stating city council supports the funding application. As stated, it says it has to be 35 or more trucks that go through that corridor. SARMA has actually listed that as 160 per day that goes through that area. So we are well within the parameters for the funding. So I recommend that Weyburn City Council provide, uh, Saskatchewan Association of Rural Municipalities with the required resolution for clearing the path application.
Do you have a motion, please?
Worship, I'd make the motion that council provide the Saskatchewan Association of Rural Municipalities with the required resolution for cleaning the path application.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? Call the question, all in favor? Carry the numbers. Jennifer, one last thing. Water treatment plant, Corey?
Thank you. So this for free chlorine modern data collection. In August 2023, the city completed an upgrade to enhance water quality and reduce THMs by introducing ammonia for chloramine formation. The system is functioning effectively, resulting in improved water quality. The process involves injecting an ammonia sulfate solution into the chlorinated water to produce ammonia. The Water Security Agency requires the collection of free chlorine data from the treated water stored reservoir at a pathway of chlorinated water to the distribution chamber. This step is crucial to ensure that the bacteria and viruses are effectively eliminated and that the water remains safe for residents. Currently, there is no instrumentation installed in the treated water stored reservoir to measure the parameters required to satisfy the WSA reporting requirements, free chlorine and flow. This instrumentation equipment was incorporated as an ammonia modification into the next water treatment plant process improvement project consisting of a powder-activated carbon or a PAC feed system to improve the taste and odor of the treated water, as well as to further reduce the THMs. The 2024 budget allocation for this project is 1.7 million. We did use 52,000 from this budget to cover an overage on the stoplogs at the dam. On May 6th, the city issued a request for proposal for the combined powder-activated carbon feed system and ammonia modification project of the water treatment plant. The lowest bidder received for the combined PAC and ammonia modification project was unexpectedly high, exceeding the budget at $3.5 million. The city requested MPE Consulting to provide pricing for the ammonia modification separately, deferring the PAC feed system upgrade until additional funding becomes available. The low bidder, Westridge Construction, submitted a revised proposal for the ammonia modification at $1,384,082, excluding taxes. This cost is within the allocated 1.7 million dollar budget for 2024 and satisfies the regulatory requirements for operation. So it is recommended that the ammonia modifications at the water treatment plant be awarded to Westridge Construction for $1,384,082, excluding taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the ammonia modifications at the water treatment plant be awarded to Westridge Construction Limited for $1,384,082, excluding taxes.
Second?
I'll second it, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Jen, thanks for putting this together. It's been a battle, for sure. I remember us talking about that PAC system at budget time. So I just, I'm hoping you can provide some context around what, if any, concerns we have with deferring that for, at the very least, a year? And I understand that you, you know, we did the right thing. We prioritized the ammonia modification project over that. But could you just provide some context around that, that powder-activated carbon piece? And what changes if we don't do it?
So with the powder-activated carbon, um, we've kind of always been in a step-by-step process, um, you know, with CO2, and then we did ammonia, and we've always had issues with THM and HAs. And basically, it's because we pull from a place like Nickel that is very high organic. And so when you start mixing chemical with the higher organics, you can have these formations of THM and HAs. So we don't meet them on the permit. It's not that we don't meet them all the time, it's just some of the time. And it tends to be, um, in our summer months, they, they will increase. So we're above the allowable level. So with that, like THM and HAs are kind of what they consider long-term health effects. So they don't know the full impact over them, but they do have a set limit on them. With, we've seen with the first two modifications, they have came down. And actually, we, um, with THMs, I believe, maybe it was the HAs. One of them, we did actually meet, the other one, we still aren't meeting. Um, and it's only during certain times of the year. So what, what it's done is it showed us we're on the right track. By delaying PAC, I don't think is, is a bad thing, actually, in the end, that we delay it a little bit longer to see, so we can optimize the CO2 and ammonia. And if we have a little more time optimizing them, then maybe we don't need the PAC. We probably still will, but I think actually waiting another year gives us a little more data. It gives us a little more information that we can make sure that we are making that right decision with that PAC. And we could look at other options. Both the engineering department, the water treatment plant superintendent, and the engineering firm were blown away by the costs. Everything is doubling. We have gone back to contractors to see, you know, like, where are these costs coming from? And they've basically said the cost is the cost. So construction is very much, um, is unpredictable right now in what is going to come back for costs. But they're still busy enough that the costs are remaining high. So I think by delaying PAC, we will be fine. And we're going to continue to optimize the system as much as we can to get as low as we can on those THM and HAs. But it could come down where, you know, we try and put a little more in reserve, or we get a little more on loan so that we can come back to fund the remainder of that PAC system.
Thanks, I appreciate that context. I, yeah, my concern was, it's not going to get cheaper.
No.
So we need to do it. Water's not a place to save money, but I, I feel better now.
Yeah.
With, with what you've said, that makes good sense that we would collect-
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of conversations with the Water Security Agency. We met with them just actually recently, and they have very much recognized the amount of time, effort, and progress Weyburn has made, um, over the years and the amount of investment we put in. So they actually even said that, you know, maybe you do wait a little bit on PAC to see if you can optimize the system a little more, especially with these, this, uh, monitor in there and stuff. Can we optimize it better? And we'll see where PAC fits after that, so.
Thanks so much.
Larry? So just to be clear, this part of it, the chlorine monitor and data collection, is a regulatory standard?
It is an absolute requirement that we have gotten basically, um, a leeway from the Water Security Agency because we don't have this, which involves, um, multiple rounds of testing per day to make sure we're meeting the requirements, whereas when we have the monitor, it would be online in our SCADA system. So, yeah, they are continually asking us for an update on where this is at. We said we're tying into the PAC system. We've now said we will still do it, we're just not doing the PAC system.
And the PAC is not a regulatory requirement?
It is not a regulatory requirement. It's only, we still have to meet those THM and HAs. So if we're not meeting those, then it becomes, what's your next step to meet those?
Okay, super. Thank you.
Drop?
So, Jen, just in regards to the costs associated with this, is this a very specialized type of, uh, equipment that only a few companies install?
Yeah, and it's all the piping modifications and, you know, you're tying in the instrumentation with your electrical and SCADA. So it tends to go to bigger companies that will general it. So Westridge is a general that has multiple trades under it. So that's why you will see less bidders on it.
Yeah, so there's a limited amount of competition in this, in this field, then?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Seeing none? Call the question, all in favor? Carry the numbers. Quirest and announcements, anything? Jeff? Go ahead.
Thanks again, your worship. I've got a couple. Jen, thanks for all your hard work. It, uh, it's very valuable. And both of my inquiries are to you. So could you, and, and, and you and the mayor sort of touched on it a little bit earlier. Just an update on First Ave. Is it on budget, on time, better than expected? It's going so darn well that we just couldn't believe it? Just if you could provide that, and then one more after that.
Okay. First Ave has gone exceptionally well. We have been, um, actually surprised with how much of the base structure is actually in place, which has allowed us to, um, which has allowed us to get, we are going to get all the way to 11th, which is good because costs are generally higher. But we were able to do a lot of underground work in there, which did create some extra timelines in there. But when we opened it up, you know, we found a massive sinkhole, which meant that a storm line had to be replaced. Valves that were supposed to work didn't work, so we replaced them while we had the opportunity. We, um, did a replacement of some underground infrastructure at the hospital. So things like that definitely did add to the schedule a little bit because we had to get those, um, underground infrastructure in place. So, um, it was a great opportunity for us to do that because we'd already removed the road structure. We, um, as you can see, we have updates going out about detours. We have had to keep the entrances open to the hospital and that. So we kind of, we closed, uh, Second Street for a day and then opened it back up and everything. So, um, but Jen Co., who is our asphalt contractor, they will be finished up all soft spot repairs. So what they do is, um, they take off the base, and then they actually proof roll it to see if there's any soft spots. We go dig out that section and rebuild that section. They have mailed all the way to 11th Street, as stated, so they're completed all the milli and for the project. And so they will be bringing their asphalt crew back next Monday, and they will be finishing the final lift of asphalt on all of First Avenue. So they have finished, um, kind of, um, government to Second Street now, and there is some local traffic on that. And then they had put a first lift, kind of fifth to 10th, but now they will come in and they will be doing all that final lift next week. And our hope, um, but this is always weather dependent, you never know what happens. Our hope is that they can finish the asphalt on it next week.
That's great. Very good. I appreciate that, and I appreciate everybody's patience. And, and great that, uh, you know, the, the communication coming back and forth on the, uh, on the city's app, the Voyant Alert, has been great, especially around the hospital access, so I appreciate that. My last question is, on 16th Street, north of East Avenue on the west side, seems to be some work going on along the curb, I would call it, probably not the right term. But can you just help us understand what's going on there?
Uh, yeah, so that project is actually a replacement of a very large storm drain that runs kind of, it's underneath that boulevard, so you would have seen a lot of the curb being removed. It runs under that boulevard and then kind of just a bit into the roadway. So that is why you're seeing delays there, and they are replacing a very large storm main.
Yeah, good. Thanks for the clarity.
Anything else? Matthew?
I appreciate council asking questions of Jen. This is Jen's very last meeting with the city of Weyburn. Very appreciative of the expertise- Very appreciative of the expertise, professionalism, Jen, that you've brought to the city of Waverne. You've really built a great team within engineering, a really great infrastructure, short, long-term planning for what you want to see for the city, and it's really helped the city build what we want to see growing forward. I appreciate your openness to answer questions to our businesses, our residents, our contractors, and especially towards our council members. We really do appreciate the work that you've done for the city of Waverne, and we want to wish you nothing but the best in the future.
Here.
Now you have to eat all of those cupcakes tonight.
I just wanted to say thank you. My time in municipal has been very enlightening, and I would say that it was something I never really saw on my career path, but I think it is the perfect way to take a break from my career path. It was exactly, I think, what I needed, and I believe that municipal service is something that everybody should, should try. I believe it was a really amazing four and a half years here, and I grew a lot, and I believe that the department grew a lot. And although I'm the one that sits at council, it is the team that sits behind me, that, you know, does so much of the work and deserves so much of the credit for everything that they've done. And like I said, I'll still probably send a picture of a sign-in or two every once in a while to them to make sure that they're all still standing. And I've already said that, you know, I'll still be around the rink and the pool and everything, so I'm not, I'm not leaving Waverne by any means, but I have to say that this has been some of the best people I've ever worked with, and I appreciate council and everything you guys do, and I wish you all luck in the next election. I can't vote for you because I don't live here, but I wish everybody the best, and yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Van Bitchen?
Yeah, I just want to echo that, thank you for all your hard work, your dedication. I think I've been on council now for a few years, and you're the, you're the third or fourth engineer that I've talked to, and you bring everything down to our level. You're never afraid to answer questions and explain everything. Your reports are excellent. Everything that you've brought to us has been easy to understand, and I think council appreciates that a lot. And like you said, I'm sure if people want to see you, they just have to go to a pool or a rink somewheres, or if you're not there, you're probably in a piece of farm equipment driving something. Anyways, good luck in your future, and thank you very much.
Anybody else? I just want to also add, too, that our next council meeting will be when? Mr. Warren?
Worship, yes, September 9th is our next council.
September 9th. Also, in closing, too, that there's, we were, Matthew and I were talking about here, that we've got, just wanted to kind of say congratulations to so many of the athletes that have come out of Waverne and done some stuff. There's a group of three young guys that went to Edmonton in soccer, junior guys, and participated in a, with the Spanish soccer team, and three of them got invited to go over to Spain next year in May and train with the Spanish team. So, and they are just an example of how many other, there's water polo people that have gone on to do great things. There's a lot of, so many of our sports teams of people have come out of here, out of Waverne and done, and this is just another example of where, with great recreation and backing of the recreation, we're able to move forward with, and give young people, youth, their opportunities to sell and work very hard. Anything else? Other than that, that's about, we had Heritage Day, and that seemed to have gone very well, and so we're just looking forward to our next council meeting, September 9th. There's no notice of motions, and so with that, we will close the meeting. Thank you.
If you'd like to share your feedback on the program you just watched, contact us today.